... Yeah, we did. We were in the rest of the... It was like five years ago. Understand the first time apparently. When it was... You know, it's hard to leave. You might as well get up the league.
Yep. So I would text Floyd. Would you like me to try and call him? Or?
Text Floyd.
I know Floyd. Do you want me to call him?
If he texts him, he's gonna see that. How great would you tell me?
Okay.
I'm good to go. We are going. It is five o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Please join us in the flag.
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America. And to the government, which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Make motion during this debate session to discuss the leave of the plan pursuant to MRSH Title 1, Check 13, Section 405, 6, 8.
Motion? Second? No matter?
I'll second it. I'll second it. For change.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote? You can stay. Check where the ones...
Oh, okay.
Where the phone is.
Keep an eye on the place.
I'll try to keep it under wraps.
Well, somebody might not, so.
I don't think we're going along. Motion to come out of this debate session? Make motion to come out of here. Call me. Call me.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Vote?
Just hearing the story here.
I know. Action on the minutes? So move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote? Adjustments to the agenda? Yes, none. Public comment? Please state your name and the town you're from.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got three.
Three?
I wrote them down, so I'd guess... When we put the road in... Not the road, but when we redid the road. Whittemore and... Robinson. I think it was porch, but I won't swear to that. Someone told me that they would do a yellow line. Or they would script, put the lines on it. And I really think they need at least a middle line. They come around those corners on... Well, enough my size. And they, no matter which way you're going, they're coming so fast, they can't... They just can't hold the cars on the road. If it's a truck, it's all right, but if it's a car, it's too light. It's moving with it. The pair has them right up through Lloyd one and the other one. On the, you know, east Oxford Road. The other thing is the ladies or people that came on the thing. At the mill. The thirty-year tip. I just want to say, I don't see any problem with it. I mean, basically, we'll all be dead, so why don't... Well. So I don't see why we're worrying about it.
You know what? She said, Neil, look over on this side. Why aren't you looking at them?
So anyway, and I run into anybody that was in my... Well, no, they're younger than I am, but anyway, close. The, and asked, you know, told them that they were considering this. Nobody asked what it was going to cost. Nobody cared what it was going to cost. They all said the same thing. When is it going to open? And the only thing I could remember was twenty-five. But if they got, if everything fell into place, they could open in twenty-five. But the whole... You've got a whole bunch of old people, like they should want to say, that really do want to stay in Oxford. And it just isn't any place unless they stay in their home. And it's one woman said, "I'm not going to end up in northern Maine at my age," you know? But the reality is, you don't get to make the choice if you, you know... You either give up all of the money you made on your house, or you take what they give you. And the other thing. The railroad crossings on Whittemore, well, Station Road, whatever, right there at that corner. And the one over on the number six road. They're really going to hell in the hand basket fast. And I assume it's just the trucks going over it, the heavy, you know, trucks with the rocks and everything. But it takes...
You mean that bridges are starting to get...
Yeah. When you go across, it's not as bad as it was when they finally fixed it. But it took, I don't know how many years to get them to even come and look at it. So if you start now. You might make it, you know? I'm going to say it's going to be a good five years before they even think about it. So impress us with, you know, a short period of time. That's mine.
Okay. Anybody else? Business silence. Six point one. John Concevus for the general application for the budget committee.
Ooh.
Sorry, I'm trying to move this along. Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Vote? Six point two sewer abatement. Account seven seventy-seven.
Yep, that's a... All right, so this is sewer abatement actually for seven seventy-seven, which aligns with... It's the casino, B and B Development. So what's happened here, in short, is requesting an abatement of twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars. This sounds like a lot, but generally their bill is between ten and fifteen thousand dollars a quarter. Something, in short... So we take, how we bill it is on the... We take the water usage from the beginning of the quarter to the end of the quarter. And that's how we base our sewer billing. When you look at the beginning of the quarter to the end of the quarter, it shows a significant amount of use more than normal. But when you look at each individual bill and the amounts used in those bills, it's more in line with their normal amount, which will bring the bill down to about thirteen thousand. For some reason, this billing cycle, there's a gap between the bills. So it shows that they use a lot more than they did, it appears. A check was Z in the sewer department. He said he has not seen an increase in, you know, he can tell if there's an increased, you know, material coming from them. He has not seen them. It appears, when you look at the bills, it just looks like there's maybe some sort of a... I'm not sure. A meter, a recording problem or something. So requesting an abatement, I've included all the bills and stuff in there for you so you can see them. Requesting an abatement of twenty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars, which would actually bring the bill down to thirteen thousand three hundred and eighteen, which is still a little higher than their average, but very in line with... So I can go into more details if you want, but that's the requirement.
So you're saying it is, this is just something that's all of a sudden... What are you saying, it's over the year?
This is the last quarter only.
Right, the last quarter. And you mean it ain't got a leak in the water pipe going in?
We've talked to the casino folks. We've talked to the water folks. We've talked to sewer, and everybody says that everything's working great.
Even if you had a water leak going in, that's not how they measure it. They measure it by the sewage.
I thought you said they were...
Water meter.
A lot of uses going in. Or do you...
Yeah, it's on the meter.
It's on the meter.
If it's on the meter, but then what are you setting up on the estimate on the sewage?
So Z can tell, Z can tell if he's getting more material from there and he's not.
But what I was getting at is the meter up more than...
Their water.
So the water meters...
Yeah, according to this, they went from forty-one hundred consumption to thirty-two thousand four hundred.
On the water. Yeah.
So...
I mean, is the meter bad? Are they got a leak going in?
We get a problem somewhere.
So we have, we have posed those concerns to the water district. And they are, they went and looked at the meters. They reported things are in working order. But that doesn't account for... When you, when you look from month to month, you start with the... When you go to do this billing cycle, you look at la, the end of last month to the start of next month, you know, for the readings. And there's a gap there. Usually, but end to start should be the same amount whenever you, when you move forward. And if you look at these bills, you can see that they're, they're not. So I don't know if there's an issue with the meter or where the issue lies, but we've made them aware of it. We've asked them to look into it. I know that the casino maintenance folks say that they're checking the meter every day now, trying to, you know, keep track of it as well.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm not... I was just trying to figure out how it would get that screwed up. Because I know that down at my place, one time I had that gun, and then they called me up and told me I was using a lot of water. And I had, you know, my big thing was that I had a leaky pipe. They let me know after I ran up a bill for about... Pretty decent amount.
So I would...
They didn't give me a rebate.
Well, I would jump on the bandwagon with you, except for if you take from each of these bills...
Yeah.
And you add up the usage that's indicated on each bill, like for the month, each month bill. It equals the thirteen thousand three hundred and eighteen. It's when you start going from the beginning of the quarter to the end, it's a significant more units that are used. Because between... See if I can give you an example here.
So does the water, does the meter need to be replaced?
I think that that's something I would look at if I was in charge of the water district. But we've asked them to look at it, and they have looked at it. And they're saying things are in working order at this point.
Well, I would still suggest that they request them.
So...
So these three monthly bills are in the quarter. Just don't add up.
Correct. Yeah, because it's... Because the present reading, which is the end of this particular month, is two eighty-one. And it jumps, and then you go to the previous reading... Excuse me, two forty-two. I'm getting myself backwards here. Present reading, two forty-seven. And then you go to the next month, and that should be the previous reading, and it jumps all the way up to two seventy-six. So there is a big, there's gaps in there of some sort. That's what the problem is. And the reason that I'm bringing this to you folks is that the ordinance specifically says that sewer abatements have to be before the water's done. That may go over.
Second. Motion in a second. Discussion? All those in favor?
So we're going to watch this going forward, I'm assuming?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm not being against it, really.
At least monthly. Yeah, I've already talked to...
I'm assuming they're not sending in the monthly bill?
The water district is.
Yeah.
So that must be up too.
The water usage? Nope. No, the monthly bills for the water usage are showing that they're using X amount, because they only look at the beginning of the month and the end of the month. But when you take, we look at the quarter when we bill for sewer. So start of the quarter, end of the quarter. And because there's gaps between each of the bills, that's where all that extra usage is coming from. I, I... It's a mystery to me as well.
Six point three, abatement for Darren Schannard, account two eight five nine, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twelve cents.
If I may, before we get started on that. This is the first abatement for our new assessing agent, Colleen. If she could introduce herself to the board, would that be okay?
Hi, I'm Colleen. You're the new assessing agent. I'm Colleen Halsey. I'm also the assessor over in Buckfield. That's where I started, so here I am, assessing agent. Happy to be here.
You may chime in, Julie.
Nice to meet you all.
So with that being said, do you want us to go over this abatement, or have you had time to review? It's for a total of a hundred and thirty-one dollars and twelve cents.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Let's vote. Six point four, abatement for Lance and Kathy Lashen, account one eight, in the amount of eight hundred twenty-two dollars and four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? None seen, all those in favor? Vote? Accept drug forfeiture funds in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Ooh.
Very good.
Well, just about cover those things. It only works that way.
Right.
Motion in a second. Any discussions? All those in favor? Vote? Accept drug forfeiture funds in the amount of three thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars. Motion second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Vote? Public safety window repair? Continue.
So if you remember a few months ago, back in September, end of September, the chief, the police chief had looked at... Trying to get, excuse me, trying to get RFPs to replace the windows. We didn't get any RFPs. I looked at an alternative that looked like maybe the windows were either installed wrong, or there was something wrong with parts of the install. So looked at getting some quotes on correcting that. Attempted to get, am I correct, you attempted to get some quotes, but you've still only got one quote from one vendor, if I remember correctly. So that one particular vendor is quoting us seven thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars to fix all eighteen windows, chief?
Yes.
Yep. And that's, I'm sure the chief will go into more detail on that, but that's why we're here tonight, is A, to ask, because it's over the bid amount, if the board would consider allowing us to move forward with that. And I think we can take a read from the public safety building maintenance line. But did you want to maybe touch on what it is they're going to fix?
Well, they came down, they actually looked at one window, and they believe that some of the problem is the way it was originally installed. So they want to remove the windows, patch and repair the entire drywall, and recaulk around all the windows and install them. They think that's going to prevent the issues that we've been having.
How many is it, eighteen?
Eighteen.
And that's seventy-five eighty-nine.
Is what they quoted.
Yeah.
So the big question is, is I, is we're asking for permission if we can... Since we've tried bids, tried quotes, we're not getting a lot of response. That puts us about twenty-five hundred and eighty-nine dollars over the need according to policy for, you know, having to go out and bid. Would the board be willing to let us waive the bid process in this instance to move forward with this?
Motion to...
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I... I can't. I can't vote in favor of her, because it... It doesn't alleviate the fact that in the middle of the wintertime, you can, that those officers can get down to like fifty-five degrees. I mean... To me, the windows just need to be replaced with something more energy efficient and distinctive. Granted, it may suck the water, but I think we're still going to have the issue of, at some point, putting something in there that keeps the cold out. I would go spend seventy-six hundred dollars to a replacement, huh?
Well, we can't get anybody to bid on replacements.
Well, I think that... On that note, I think we need to ask why. Why can we not get contractors to bid for stuff that's unbarred?
I, I did have one place that called me back and said they lost employees, and they just didn't have the manpower to come down and be able to do it. That was one place. And the other place, I have no idea why they...
When, when did we, when did the RFP close?
I don't remember when it closed, but I know I, I called on September twenty-second.
So, yeah. I mean, on nine nineteen, excuse me, closing nine nineteen, sorry.
Okay.
I would, personally, I'd like to see it go back out to bid after the first of the year, where contractors are looking for work for the spring. And, you know, just stop their year off. You might have a better response than towards the end of the year, especially if everybody was really busy, so...
Were you there when it took you back? I was not. You were. Is this, is this company, a company that would put new windows in? I believe they would. Replace some? I mean, different, I mean, you guys, you two know the building better than I do. I don't, I'd hate to put seven thousand dollars into it, and in five years, they could put all the windows in. And I'm not an expert, that's why they came down and looked at them, and that was their opinion. Your company might be residential size?
Uh, no, they're, they're a little wide. No, they're, they're all crank out.
I mean, did you pose the question then, should we replace them or not?
No. They will probably come and have to be done. The day will probably come that it will have to be done.
Well, I understand that, but if, uh... If they'd said that they were, it wasn't installed right, maybe it wasn't installed.
That, that was their opinion. They believed that they could correct the problem by pulling them out and reinstalling after they did some other...
I'm not, you know...
They're talking about the water coming in? Yeah.
They think between the settling and the original installation is where the problems lie.
Oh, I guess that's, you have to take your word for it.
So is this going to solve the problem of cold coming in that Scott's talking about? If they take them out and reinstall them right, they talk about that?
I thought you had mentioned it might correct water and drafts.
That's what they believe, yes.
Both water and drafts.
But maybe, not to waylay this, but maybe is the better approach to see if this company would be willing to give... Did you ask about a quote from this company for the, to replace windows? I can't remember.
I believe we did. But I think they came down, will look at it, and then that's when they made the decision that they thought they could fix the problem and replace them.
Mm-hmm. I remember that conversation.
Yeah. They put any kind of guarantee that they're going to fix the problem? They didn't mention that, indeed.
No, because they're not, it's not their windows, so, I mean, like putting on a...
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's anything about a guarantee as far as the repair goes. Or warranty, excuse me.
When would this work be able to be done, if they said that?
Uh, they emailed me last week, just waiting to find out what the decision was going to be, if they're ready to move forward. Motion in a second. On the floor.
Can I ask? If we, they're not any of them at all. So do we, like, we qualify as where a homeowner, does this town, can they qualify for, uh...
Like efficiency maintenance type stuff?
Yeah.
You could certainly look.
Probably a replacement.
I mean, because those are not, I mean, they're twenty years old anyway, and they're just not perfect, single pane, they're nothing.
My, all, I mean, we've, it's, look, I, I agree, it's, we, we've talked about this and talked about this, and it, you know, it's been twenty years. I mean, at some point, that's a building you're going to spend some money on, at some point.
Do you want us to see if this company will give us a updated quote on replacement of all the windows? Maybe break it down one window at a time, so that if, for some reason, we can do, I don't know, seven windows for seven thousand dollars, maybe we could hit the front of the building, and then next year hit the last side, or, you know, something to that effect, or...
I'm, I'm for anything with a plan that gets us to the point of...
I would support getting a quote on replacing the windows. And it's not going to be worth it for them to come up and do one window, but if they can come up and knock them out five or ten at a time, if you can do half now and half next year, then they're all done. When we can have the money to do it, but to do them all at once, certainly be interested in assuming if they're going to do them all at a certain price. Do you like that, the quote's broken down to half this year, half next year, or all at once? All at once, and then if they're willing to do half or third, whatever. Money's money to them, keeping their guys working, I'm sure. This is a Band-Aid, taking them out from the back end. It probably helps, but it's not a long-term solution.
Wouldn't we be eligible for that innocent program? I'm, I'm saying, but they're, I, I've, they're out of, out of the, the Anderson, but...
Would, would the board be willing to entertain a, an amount, or do you want us to go back?
I think we need to come back with an amount. It's going to be substantially more than seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
When we, when we vote on the...
Motion second, on the floor. Okay.
Didn't you already vote on a amount for windows previously?
I think that I had proposed, I had proposed some amounts, and I think, I thought this determination was that we didn't get the RFPs, so I had to go back out again. I don't think there was a definitive amount. I can check minutes if you want me to, but I didn't think there was a definitive amount.
So the motion is to waive the RFP, the bid process, correct?
No.
That's what he was asking for.
So this year was to waive it? To waive the bid process?
Oh, yeah, to waive it, but to have the project done.
Yeah.
Seven thousand.
At the seven, yeah. At the seven thousand dollars.
At the seventy-five eighty-nine.
Right. So motion on... Do we have a motion in a second? We do. All those in favor? Standing the seven thousand dollars? Of waiving the RFP bid process. In, in spending the seven...
Have the both of it together?
To spend the money, that's what we determined to do.
Okay.
I will also vote for that. I would, that's a vote four to one. Scott proposed. I would like better information before we move forward.
The other quotes.
The other quotes on replacement. So you, you have the authorization to go forward with this if we need to. But you're going to give us the other quotes first.
I'll make it work.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Clear as mud.
We won't have to revisit doing this, but if the other notes, if the other quotes are too high.
Yeah, I presume that'd be astronomical.
Uh... Six point eight, accept an anonymous donation of three thousand dollars, the office with the department's dared to reserve account.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion? And a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Can we send them an anonymous thank you?
Yes.
We can.
Uh, department head report. We have none of them, assuming?
I do not have one today.
Town manager report.
All right, I'll make this quick. Uh, the highway driver labor, you can scratch that off. We actually just finalized with somebody today, which is great. Uh, we still are looking for, however, a part-time highway snowplow labor person. Still have a police officer opening, though we've got a prospect candidate in the works, which is great. Department walkthroughs, we kind of got waylaid with some of the other issues that came up, so I had a proposal for you guys, see what you think. I'd like to get, I'd like to get these done so we can have the info for budget season. The recreation department was the one that had next on the list. I was thinking of addressing that on the twenty-first of this month. But I've gotten some mixed comments from different board members individually about, you know, doing the walkthroughs. Does the board want to do a walkthrough of the rec, or do we feel comfortable as far as we've all been to the rec center and model and so forth, and just have the rec director come on the twenty-first to review, do like an extensive department head report with summer rec? with summer rec, her activities, and that kinda thing? Are you guys comfortable with that, or would you like to do a site visit for her?
I would be.
I would be, I don't really wanna walk through the ball fields right now, so I'm here.
All right. So, with that being said, if you guys are okay with killing two birds with one stone, how about we schedule, at the next meeting, to do a walkthrough of the transfer and recycling buildings? And then, you know, we do that at five, transfer recycling buildings, so they'll be inside, and it's nice and snuggly in there, and then come here after, Ed can do a quick department head report, and then Kayla can do her rec report, and we can have those out of the way, is that okay with you guys?
Killing.
Works for me.
All right, so I'll do that. Um, and then two other quick things, I've got, uh, Maine DOT reached out, they're planning on replacing traffic lights all around the state, specifically also in front of Walmart and in front of Hanford here in town, um, they were giving us a heads up, allowing for public comment from the town, my comments were, I was extremely concerned after what I just saw on Route twenty-six this last summer, um, the chief had the pleasure of sitting with me, um, please night work, you know, please pay more attention to, you know, traffic flow, emergency vehicles, all of those kinda things, and when are you planning to do this, and please don't make it in July. So, um, they have not set the date on when they're doing it, they said they're gonna get back to us, they did say something about night work was because of, because of the intersections, it's gonna have to be done at night, so that it made me feel a little bit better.
And before we move on, so, both of those lights are currently maintained by Walmart and Hanford, so it, they do that as Maine DOT, or is that bill gonna come to us?
It is not coming to us, no, I, I believe, because we made, I think we mentioned that in the meeting, was Walmart in Hanford cave with those lights, they're privately owned, I think is the term I use, so, um-
They're just installing the upgrades to modernize the lights, is what they-
There's a big difference, the chief and I learned, between a switch box and a-
Cabinet.
And a cabinet, we had to listen to that for forty-five minutes, anyway.
Quite educational.
Yes.
So, to answer my question, that will come to us?
The bill?
Yeah.
The bill should not come to us?
No, maintenance upgrades will come to us. 'Cause they did, they did this down in Auburn-
Yeah.
And then they paid to install the new ones.
Would you like me to-
The city, the, the city is still to be maintained.
All right, let me follow up-
If you could clarify that, I guarantee you that's exactly what's gonna happen.
And do we have a switch box or a cabinet now, in which we'll be, we'd be going to?
We have cabinets now, yes, and we know what a cabinet is, I'm sorry. All right, I'll follow up on that, Scott.
So, we keep most of them busy, huh?
All right. Um, next, fire department, Department of Labor, the, um, issues that were brought to us, uh, when they did their walkthrough, Acting Chief Corwell has, um, been communicating with them, we've got those corrected, the only exception is the turnout gear that was approved, it, it's been ordered, just haven't, haven't received it yet, so, um, however they market, it's, it's taken care of, but we, it's the only open-ended thing, we've provided them with the copy of the PO and all that stuff, so they know it's being taken care of. So, that's, uh, what I've got for you.
Flight numbers?
I just got a, a couple, and, uh, we've talked about it before, but are we still gonna move forward with putting the pick channel backup in our setup next? We talked about it once, about using the cable, manage money to do that.
So, I reached out to the gentleman that was supposed to, the contractor that was supposed to help us with these walls, and he and I keep going back and forth, back and forth, and I'm at the point where I think that we need to move on, and just put this project out to bid, you know, put this all out to bid, so that we can get some prizes. Reason I've been so hesitant is 'cause it'd be nice to have this room completely done, before we mount that equipment. It is, it is stored and locked up in the cornerback there, so we have it all, um, but if we can't, we, I think we need to get this done first, that's all, but if you want, I mean, we can just move forward with-
No, I just, uh, I know we talked about it, and I was, that was still gonna happen at some point, so, but I, I still have people asking me why I can't.
But that's a hesitation, though.
You said two?
I did all in one.
Mission. Um, just on the agenda, talk about putting this out to bid, next meeting?
Sure.
All right, I have one thing, um, I've been kicking it down the road, wanted to do it a little while ago, but it's hard to get all of us here at one time, so, um, we recently had a-
So, you know it's fresh.
I don't know if you noticed about this, but, um, we recently had a retirement, the fire department, Deputy Commissioner Scott Hunter, um, and this plaque says, appreciation of your loyal and dedicated service to the Oxford Fire Department, on behalf of the Oxford Board of Selectmen, the citizens of Oxford. You guys wanna come up for it?
Good.
You do? Yeah. You want Travis here, too?
Well, I'm glad I was, too, because nobody informed me, other than a member in the public that knew about it, so that was kinda disappointing.
We-
And I know there's a way that one of you could've got ahold of me, guaranteed, so I was disappointed that I didn't hear about it from any of you guys.
It's done.
Thank you.
Would you hear from them?
I'm not gonna tell you.
That resources-
It was a citizen in the town that knew about it.
I'll, I'll tell you, Travis, we didn't know what was gonna happen tonight, 'cause I didn't know if everybody was gonna be here, and we've been putting it off, and it hasn't been, so-
I'd have come to every meeting if I knew it was gonna happen.
We'll let it go.
And while I'm speaking, there's somebody else who retired from the fire department just recently as well, that probably should be recognized for all of his service. Personal opinion.
I think Scott's forty-five years, forty-five, um, is well deserved, that's probably not even close to enough, but he's done, so-
I agree.
Final words.
Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty. While you guys are doing that, there's some signatures in here, this is Mr. Tibbetts' appointment papers, you'll also see that there are three, this is for the drug forfeiture, this actually only needs to be signed by the chairman of the board, these three. Is your-
So, I reckon you guys ended up just here and there. Um, we got three up by Rogers. By Rogers, you didn't? Yeah. Out right behind you, all those two. Good, good. Real happy. What a tenth of them.
A tenth of them.
They know we was failing, but- As you're trapping them, can you have a swing replacement?
Yeah, I think, I think-
Colin Hall's, PG. Yep. And PG, L S, Paul's. Make sure the sign, 'cause I've only had one case a couple times, so-
She's close to, uh, Austin.
Yeah, I do, what we have, H O L S. Do you ever get any of them cited?
No, I've been watching. Last one, big title. Motion, we sign warrants, forty-six?
I didn't weigh in, but-
Forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty, twenty-nine, good.
Motion, second, all those in favor? Vote. Motion to adjourn? Motion, second, all those in favor? Vote. In all, when did it begin? Uh, December twenty- Yeah, it's hotter right now with the snow, the ground is, for, you know, freezing fast.
Okay.
Yeah, a couple of forty pines and one real bad skunk, one real bad skunk.
Lois?
Neil.
You mentioned about lines.
About what lines?
James and I were talking-